Mr. Mingo.
I felt bad.
I apparently broke my foot Saturday. Didn't know about it until today when they took my accident.
What did you kick?
Um, she deserved it. I was fixing a fence off the door for a long time. And I stepped in a bathroom. And I had an armful of tools. Of course, I was trying not to get impaled by some tool.
We're going to go ahead and call the City Commission meeting. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, after everybody's brackets have been broke for March Madness, I guess it's okay that we're all here tonight, right? For City Commission business. Al, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denner.
Here.
All right, next on our routine business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 14th, 2022. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes of our last meeting? Anybody in the public? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our last meeting, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, minutes approved. I will now turn it over to City Manager Leon for her City Managers' report.
We've got the bills yet.
Okay, so I printed my agenda out when it was first sent out. There must have been a revision. I should know better and grab one coming out. I thought that when I got it. No problem. So I guess, thank you for catching me on that. I was just checking to see if you all were paying attention. You pass, so we're good. So I would ask for a motion to approve the bills.
So moved. I'll second.
Now we're all ready to get the move done. All right, we have a motion and a second on the bills. Any discussion on that? Anybody in the public want to make a comment on the bills? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now, on both of my agendas, it says we're moving on to the City Managers' report, so I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. Apologize about some of the links in the packet maybe not showing up or popping up on work session and in your regular packet. We'll double check here with staff and make sure that those are working for us when we leave on Friday, so they're working for you when you look over the weekend at your packet. A few things for you this evening to talk about. Number one, a couple of dates for you to jot down and just start thinking about. Duane is having us start to consider the 2023 budget timeline. Looks like about around the 13th and 14th is when we will begin our budget discussions. I don't know of June, excuse me, June 13th, 14th. I don't know if that's a regular meeting date or not. If it is a regular meeting date, we will be in this room. But I want to make sure I'm clear with you. If you want the budget meetings broadcast, if you do, all of our budget meetings need to be scheduled here. Just a lot more convenient and better equipment, et cetera, that we have here. So if you want those, all broadcasts, all of our budget meetings will be here, and we'll work through the schedule. But I wanted to get your direction on that.
What was the date again?
I believe we're shooting right now for the 13th of June, and then if we need the 14th. And I'm not sure if that's a-
13th is a regular- 13th is a regular-
Okay, so we do probably a 5:30, like we've done in the past, and then extend it after our regular meeting, or take Tuesday as well. So we will, we can and will broadcast that one. If we do that, I think we should broadcast all the budget meetings then and plan that our August meeting also be in this room. Okay. Also, if you want to just jot down, maybe in pencil, June 15th and 16th, these are the dates that we're tentatively have reached out to the City of Norfolk on to consider our exchange dates. So we've reached out to them. If either of those two dates would work for their staff and team to come and visit our community, we have not heard back yet from them. So we'll follow up with them, but I just, you know, people's summers are busy. I'm not looking for everyone to participate all day, but we'd have elements of the day for folks to participate in if they want. So maybe place that one in pencil for now. Absentee voting is available at City Hall right now. The time to register to vote for the municipal election has come and gone. You can also absentee vote at the School Administration Building, so just so folks know that. Also getting questions about other upcoming elections and people thinking they might be able to vote for different elections where we already have signage up in town. We're working with the school on the school board election, so it's City Commission and school board. Those are the two that are available. And that's the election that will be also on April 12th. So just so people are clear on that, they can certainly call us and we can help them out if they're uncertain. Or we can refer them also to the website with the state where they can see what they need to know on elections and eligibility to vote, et cetera. Folks are getting ready for citywide cleanup. You'll see there's some items coming out on the curb, and you're okay now to put your items out on the curb. If you're on a regular route, you can place those items out. We will begin the curbside pickup on April 4th. So we've already had good results with people coming to the transfer station and dropping off things at no charge, but we will begin the cleanup on April 4th. So please do not continue to put things out. Put them out once because we don't keep circling the neighborhoods. We go by once on our route, and that's when things are picked up. Couple of presentations that you'll have in upcoming meetings. Yankton Thrive, Nancy Winandy is coming to give you an update on Thrive's activities. They've been aboard now for under a year, but enough has happened that she would like to come and update you prior to budget season on the activities of Yankton Thrive. Also, United Way, Greater Yankton, will be coming to give a presentation as well, so we can look forward to that. I think, too, we will be changing our meeting space. I know I've said this several times. I thought during our last meeting, well, we can change back our meeting space and all get together again. And I watched a little too much news between our last meeting and this meeting, and I just thought, well, we'll hold off a couple more weeks. So we're monitoring that. If things stay as they are, we will move our meeting space back to having everyone back up here again. So appreciate your patience in that. Just wanted to be sure that we were ready to move forward in that way, so. I don't have anything else to talk about, Mayor, unless there's questions from the Commission.
I did receive a question about where to place your items if you have an alley pickup for garbage. Do they want it where normal garbage is placed or on the curb in front of the house?
On the curb. So there's some folks that get their, get their pickup typically in the alley, but we ask that they bring it out on their boulevard. So, and, you know, two item placements important. Get it out there in front. If it's too close to your house, our folks may not grab it because they're uncertain about, you know, is this trash or treasure?
The last two questions I had on it were last day that it's free at the transfer station, and then the date of hazardous household waste. I think that's an important one to let folks know.
It is, and I'd like to tell you from memory, but when you guys, my memory got cleared talking about Clearwell, so I'm going to look here, see if it's in my update. Yes, so Saturday, April 16th is the last day that you can bring things. And then our household hazardous waste is- the 23rd of April.
And is that a Saturday, the 23rd?
That's a Saturday.
So it's a Saturday morning, right?
That's a Saturday morning. I still haven't found it, but it's a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Nine to one.
Fantastic.
And there is a charge for that.
Right.
All right, any other questions for the City Manager? All right, with that, we'll move on. Now is the time and place for anybody in the public who would like to address the Commission with something that is not on the agenda. Seeing no movement, we will move on to the consent agenda items. We have two of those. One is to establish 12:00 PM on Friday, April 15th, 2022, as the time and date of a notice to call a special City Commission meeting to canvass the election returns of the City of Yankton election, which will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. The second one is in consideration of a motion to combine the April 12th, 2022 City of Yankton municipal election with the April 12th, 2022 Yankton School District election to share in the cost of said election and to ratify agreement signed by the Yankton School District Representative and the City of Yankton Representatives' share in the cost and the administration of this election. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to move that item number two come off the consent agenda. However, you want to play out the order of that.
Okay.
Motion. But then I believe I can also second Bridget's motion.
So we'll make a motion to approve just item one on the consent agenda. You're okay with that, Commissioner Mybaum? Is your motion?
You bet.
Commissioner Benson, you're okay with your second still for the one item?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, moving on to old business. Old business number one is consideration of memorandum 22-51 regarding the request for a special events malt beverage on-off sale license for one day, which is August 5th, 2022, from Utica Hall Reeb LLC, doing business as Utica Hall, at 801 McCarthy Street in Utica. This is for an event at the 4H Grounds located at 901 Wedding Drive. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 22-52 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for two days, which is August 19th through the 20th, 2022, from the Yankton Rodeo Association, Doug Heavely, President. This is at the rodeo grounds located at 404 Paddle Wheel Drive. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Hang on a second. Okay, moving on to new business. Number one under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-53 regarding the agreement for professional services with Stockwell Engineers, Inc., for, and you probably noticed the typo in your Commission packet. This should be for 31st and Broadway Development Project, not 21st, as was indicated in your original agenda. This would be for the survey, design, bidding, and construction and administration of services of the entire project, including sidewalks, streets, water lines, and sanitary lines up to completion. That is in the amount of $544,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, I don't know if you, Adam, Dave, whoever, might want to kind of walk the Commission. This is a big project and maybe kind of walk the public and the Commission through this.
So I can walk you through the why, but I'm going to have Adam walk you through the what and sort of talk to you a little bit more about the specifics of the contract. So, so we're excited about all the things that are happening here development-wise in our community, and Soccer and their development coming forward is one of those. And knowing we have some responsibility in portions of the street and also of the infrastructure there, we felt like it was a good timing because of that and also because of folks that have expressed more serious interest in what remains a city-owned property there on the corner to go ahead and start to design the infrastructure and roads to be part of that development. Now, we realize that this is a large contract. What we can do is reimburse through the potential of a tax increment finance district, so engineering services are reimbursable expense. And we know whatever potentially is developed there will be part of a tax increment finance district. So we would expend these funds through the 506 and then have it reimbursed through a TID or TIF when that develops. So with that, I'll have Adam talk to you about what this project includes and all the elements. Stockwell Engineers, as you know, work with our staff on a number of projects. They work as an extension of our staff on those. And they've also done a lot of the preliminary work, so it was very natural for us to recommend to you to utilize Stockwell Engineers for this project.
Yeah, as Amy is saying, this is a full-service contract. This will take this project from beginning to end. What it includes is literally approximately six blocks of new street at that location, plus the site development, preparation work for the city-owned parcel that's remaining there for future development on that property. So it'd be shovel-ready for any potential developers in the future. This would include the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, stormwater management, street, pavement, sidewalk, so all those aspects. Dave would like to add one thing.
So this is a role that the city typically doesn't play in a project. We are actually the developer when it comes to this project. So this sort of contract isn't something that you normally see on a regular basis. This would be similar to what happened way back when we did Fox Run or something of that nature, and that's why it's such a large contract. We have an obligation to the Soccer Association as a part of that lease agreement. We agreed that we'd provide all the adjacent public infrastructure. And as the subdivider slash developer of that property to the east there between Broadway and the future street, this is the type of contract that the private sector enters into on a regular basis when they do a large development. So that's why it seems like a little bit different sort of animal than what we're used to doing. But in this case, since we're the owner developer, it's fairly standard, and the number is standard for that size of a project.
Does this also include any work that may be needed to be done on the state highway, or is that going to have to be worked out with the DOT or in conjunction?
Yes, to all of those questions. It will have to be worked out with the DOT, and it does include design services for the part of the lane configuration analysis and potential changes that would need to occur on Broadway. Correct, where 33rd Street intersects.
And do we anticipate a bunch of work that would have to be done there? Or is it more of just working on turn lanes? Or is it extending?
There could be a turning lane project, northbound turning west, turning lane project, most likely will be. There will also be a separate engineering contract eventually for a traffic analysis that's not part of any of the construction. So that might be what you're used to seeing in that instance. So that would be an analysis that the DOT is going to require us to go through at some point, separate from this.
So in looking at that, again, just thinking of safety and the dreaded slow lane around the airport that we're all enduring right now, do we see that eventually, like, speed limits and all of that stuff might have to change? Or how is it just going to be, I'm assuming, because you wouldn't put a stoplight stoplight half-block, that it's just going to be stop signs and just hopefully a lot of good marking and sightlines there at least?
Yeah, so those are exactly the type of questions that that traffic analysis will answer, what's required. Similar to like, you know, this isn't going to have the volume that Walmart did, but the same process had to be undertaken at that east entrance to Walmart off Broadway. Same sort of process.
This is somewhat related, but if you go a little south where Wendy's is, I get a lot of questions about if we're looking at a traffic signal there. I don't know if the DOT has studied that intersection lately. And if we're going to be doing a traffic study, could we just apply it to that, too?
So we currently have a request into the DOT for that specific intersection, for them to analyze that intersection. We believe they're working on that. We have not heard back yet on the results of that. But yes, this would have the same type of analysis as Dave explained. The DOT would be very involved with that, any changes that need to be made or adjustments.
So a question I have just for clarification, because the last, first sentence in the last paragraph says the total compensation for the engineering services is $544,000. But that's actually the total cost of streets, port, no, it's just engineering design?
Just the engineering.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Adam, can you talk a little bit about, so the deliverables themselves? What kind of timeframe are we looking at? I mean, we just kicked off spring here, but what are we going to see first? And what are we going to see last?
So a lot of that depends, I believe, on future development potential and where Soccer's at, hopefully sooner than later. I know we're getting into the year, and maybe Stockwell has a little more input on that, on their timeline, but- the design could start right away. Construction could potentially happen all at once, could be segmented out. It just depends on how that process plays out.
Is it fair to say, though, we'd have all of the deliverables that are noted here before summer?
Probably not.
Okay, so we're, okay.
So this is complete project engineering, so it takes it all the way to project completion. So if you say all of the deliverables, that means the project's done.
Sorry, I'm just talking about preliminary plan, cost estimates, the road documents, letter of intent.
We do have Stockwell Engineer here, so I don't know if Brad, Eric, anybody wants to, is dying to talk to us. Come on, Brad.
Name and address, please.
I'm Eric Derrickson. I'm with Stockwell Engineers. Maybe this would be part of your original question, too, was I think our, the construction cost estimate wasn't part of this packet, but it was right around 5.2 million construction cost in terms of, you know, laying down the concrete, pipe, et cetera. As far as deliverable goes, you know, we would certainly start off, you know, with any of our, going through project initiation, you know, talking with the city. You know, we've kind of been doing that, you know, within the Yankton U Soccer portion, as well as working with Dave. Then as we get the survey done, then we would continue to work with Dave to get, you know, as many of the developers' requests, you know, essentially addressed, so that way we don't have to do a lot of, you know, demolition or cutting of a new street, you know, off of when they decide to move in. As far as schematic design, you know, kind of your preliminary plans, I would say, you know, as we go throughout this fall, we would definitely have something like that. And then ultimately, I don't think it'd be unreasonable to be able to have, you know, your bid documents, you know, sometime, you know, next year, early next year, to try and get ahead of, I would say, the more expensive time of late spring, so. Is that kind of-
Excellent, thank you.
I've got a question for, I suppose probably for Adam. I had somebody stop in at my shop here this afternoon. I apologize, I didn't ask if it was all right to use their name, so I won't. They had asked if, you know, it's a $545,000 bid for the engineering. They had asked, and I thought in air of transparency, if this had been a competitive bid process, how that worked. I didn't have the answer, so I thought I would ask it because I thought it was a legitimate question to ask.
It's professional services, so it doesn't have to be bid out. Typically, an engineering contract of this size, I don't want to say typically, but I would say oftentimes an engineering contract of this size, we would do a request for proposals and, you know, go through a scoring and ranking process. And when we do that, for various projects, Stockwell is often one of our bidders. You know, we know Stockwell can do this project successfully, and we also, we've also had them work on our preliminary work for the site. And so with the timeframe that we think that Soccer's going to want to get underway, we think that it's best to move forward quickly. An RFP process, as you know with us, nothing moves quickly. It would be advertising that out and getting those back, ranking them. We'd be into summer, so that's, you know, why. And also, we chose Stockwell for this project, and I think that, you know, if we're going to do an RFP, we should do it in that, in no way are eyes wide open. And in this case, we would want Stockwell to do this project because they've done the preliminary work for us, and they're right here, and we know they can do the job for us, so.
Thank you.
I note in where it talks about the compensation, there isn't any, like, happy customer discount. So there is no, like, 15%, 20% discount because we care about you guys so much. It's not really a question.
I think we get extra cashews at Christmas or something like that. I would say that, yeah, write that down. I would say that, you know, Stockwell is involved in our community as well, and they've been generous with organizations throughout the community. So you can look at that as maybe them being participatory in other parts of the community, too. So we appreciate that, and their, you know, willingness to contribute in other projects in the community.
Other questions from the Commission? Anybody in the public like to address the Commission? All right, we do have a motion and a second, so Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Excuse me, Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-49 regarding a bid award for the cold applied plastic pavement marking installation project. This is in the amount of $57,560 to Dakota Traffic Services, LLC. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-54 regarding the downtown Yankton facade grant recommendations and I do ask the commission to indulge me for a few minutes here as I walk us through this and what goes in this motion. So if the motion goes through tonight, the request in our pocket is for the $60,000 we had budgeted as part of this program. The committee met and received quite a few wonderful applications. So before you tonight are the following projects of that $60,000. 215 Mulberry Street for $22,000, 401 Capital Street for $16,800, 202 West Second Street for $15,450 and 328 Walnut Street for $5,750. If approved, if there's a motion and a second approved tonight for that $60,000, total project costs of what the owners are putting into that along with us is almost $294,000 in improved projects in our downtown. The other thing, as we make a motion tonight in front of you, is looking at an additional amount to be put into this, another $27,000 the committee is asking for from the commission tonight. Again, because they received so many wonderful projects, they are also asking for $10,000 for 211 West Third Street, $8,000 for 335 Walnut Street and $9,000 for 104th Street. Wanted to read that all out loud so that everybody understood if you make a motion, the motion currently in front of us is for $60,000 which has been budgeted and $27,000 to be added to include the other three properties. Or you can make a motion to approve the $60,000 and we can do a separate motion if need be in discussion for the additional. What is your pleasure?
So moved to approve the grant agreement for all seven projects of the total $87,000.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, is there any commission discussion? I know Commissioner Schramm, you served on that, others on city staff, anything to share there on your thoughts of all these projects that were selected and for the additional money?
Sure. There's a specific question from one of the commissioners about the projects. I'm sure Dave or myself or city manager could answer, but the sheer number of quality projects is just impressive. The progress popularity has only grown. We increased the budget to 60,000 in this last year and we got to give a lot of credit to the staff in Dave's office, Brad Bees in particular, for his almost-too-good-of-coaching for all these quality projects. So it's really impressive and very desirable and you can just see if you drive around in the Maridin District, the results of that program. It's one that you can, you can almost, you can touch, literally. And so it's been really neat and I'm just impressed with how much interest and desire there has been to revitalize the storefronts and the facades of those buildings downtown.
Yeah, wonderful, and I guess I forgot to mention when I walked through this, asking for that additional $27,000 is a $69,000 investment between the business owners. So if you add up basically what we're looking at, we're over $360,000 in that partnership through this facade grant and improvements going on in our downtown district. Any other thoughts, comments from commissioners?
So have the details of these projects been shared with the commission yet? I feel like usually we get those uploaded somewhere so we can take a look at them and I don't need to see them tonight necessarily, but I would like to see the plans eventually.
Yeah, I don't think we did put them in the packet, but we certainly can make them available to everyone.
Great. And then, Dave, at some point, will you update us on how we're coming along from projects from last year? I know there's probably quite a few that are hung up because of construction delays and supply delays.
Yeah, we can, I can get a more in-depth analysis, project by project, to you. We can get that written up and included in your next packet. The short answer is, is just like everything else, there's supply chain issues with doors and windows and things like that, so we're trying to be patient with folks and everybody so far still has good intentions of completing their projects, so we worked with finance to carry some money forward to make sure that we still get the projects done that were planned last year.
And if people wonder, why is the city spending so much on the downtown? For me, the answer is these buildings are historic and once the caliber and the history of these buildings is gone, we'll never get anything like it again. So that's why we're helping these property owners to invest in these buildings so they last for decades to come still.
And I would point out to Commissioner Johnson's, what's in there in the packet, if at all, anybody's curious, it does list out what the projects for each property is. There are not pictures. I know the city's been great about taking before and after for sure and seeing those are already always impressive, but just want to point that out, that while, you know, again, tuck pointing and some other stuff, it does spell out some of that in the commission packet if there's anybody in the public watching it tonight that's curious about that. Other question?
And just to clarify too, funds that are awarded to these individuals and businesses, those are paid out at completion?
Correct. It's all based on reimbursement. We see invoices either for materials or contractor-provided services before they're reimbursed.
And just got to commend you again, Dave. This is your brainchild. This is a huge deal and each and every year, it's gotten bigger and better and more popular and I don't recall what it was exactly, but we're well into seven figures worth of investments that have been made downtown and the city's portion of that has actually been a pretty small portion, when you think about it in the end. So I look forward to the continued success of this program and again, I think it's largely thanks to you.
I would add Brad Bees in that comment, too.
Okay, Brad, too.
He's doing the heavy lifting.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you can definitely drive through downtown and see what past dollars have done for our downtown areas. Commissioner Johnson said they often say your downtown is your kitchen or your heartbeat of your community and it's nice to see us taking care of that if approved. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? All right, Al, roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-56 regarding additional deputy city attorney positions, I guess if we want to word it that way. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ross, did you want to kind of explain what's being asked here?
Sure. There's been some turnover in the state's attorney's office. As you guys may recall, in the past, we've historically deputized the deputy state's attorneys as deputy city attorneys, so if there's ever need for one of them to appear on one of our ticket files when they come before the court or if necessary to consolidate city tickets into global plea bargains, you know, it sometimes makes sense to drop a fleeing city ticket in exchange for pleading guilty to a felony, for instance. So it can pursue the ends of justice, but since we have some new staff at the state's attorney's office, we need to revisit who is authorized to act on behalf of the city on city tickets. So that's the purpose. It's a global reappointment of my staff as well, but that isn't changed from the last time. So the only changes is the Tyler Larson and Deborah Lilly from the county.
Yes, so in front of us tonight is Lindsey Havden, Bo Barrett, Deborah Lilly and Tyler Larson, correct, those four?
Correct. And the other two work for me.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-50 recommending approval of resolution 22-11, which is the acquisition of 8,580 square feet of the Marn Creek area property known as the West 60 feet of lots 16, 17, 18 and Block 43 of Lower Yankton Edition. That obviously is in the city of Yankton. This is in the amount of $3,003 and if approved tonight, not covered under grant, would come out of the Marn Creek property acquisition in the budget. As we've worked through this, this is another project that would aid in flood mitigation. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Now, new number six under new business is a motion to combine the 2022 election, which is in consideration of, a motion to combine the April 12, 2022 city of Yankton municipal election with the April 12, 2022 Yankton school district election and to share in the cost of said election and to ratify agreement signed by the Yankton School District representative and the city of Yankton representative to share in the cost and administration of this election. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there commission discussion?
Ross, would you want to?
Sure.
Jack about?
So under state law, whenever the school district wishes to have a combined election with the city commission, they can make a motion and enter into an agreement with the city to host a joint election. And each year that the city and the school have elections, we have historically combined them going back to the early 1980s. So protocol-wise, the school district always passes a motion in January if they're going to have an election and then their lead election official enters into a written agreement with our lead election official, who is Mr. Al Verrick here, and that's been the process year after year. But looking at that process carefully, it looks like the city also needs to approve that request because they're joining our election. So this is just the other half of that to close it. So each year from here on out, we have joint elections, we will be having a similar motion to accept their decision to join. And the form agreement that we sign is a form that's provided by the Secretary of State. It's a fairly standardized agreement. It just says the costs of the election are shared between the two entities, so it's the same one we've used forever.
Thank you for that. Any other commission discussion or questions?
And just so we're on the same page, I know it says share, but this is coming off conversations that we've had before with the school and our shared facilities agreement that we have with them where it's 60% this, 30% this, you know, where we spell all of that out in detail. What we're talking about here, particularly with this motion, is we are essentially sharing equally in the costs of putting on this election, like Al alluded to at the last meeting. Is that right?
That is correct, Commissioner Mybaum. Al, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we conduct the election and we send the school district to bill for half of our costs and they pay us back. Is that correct?
Basically, it's shared 50%. We take the lead on all projects. The only exception to that is there's different expenses that the school has and that we have that are not exactly equal, for instance, absentee voting. If we hire somebody to take on some of those duties and responsibilities down at City Hall, we don't charge the school the extra 50% of that. That's our responsibility as our election. Same thing with the city, or the school. If they spend above and beyond for something they do above and beyond, they pay those costs. You know, we don't bill each other back on that one. So it's almost always 50/50, other than a few exceptions for labor or something that we take on as our own responsibility.
Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. We do not have any other business in front of the city commission tonight, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn in an executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personal matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining. All right, motion carries. We are adjourned into executive session.